We're meeting at 6:30 PM, meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. This obviously is a virtual meeting on Zoom. Our first order of business after a roll call is to go into executive session. I'll read the motion then, but first we'll start with a roll call, please. Jack?
Jack Creighton here.
And Kennedy here.
Paul Schubert here.
Harry Thompson here.
Great, thank you. And Cory will join us in executive session. We are going into executive session for probably no more than a half hour, under exception number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, I do declare, the board will discuss treats upon easements, and then we will likely discuss those during the public session later on. So with that, if there's a motion for executive session?
So moved and followed by reentry to regular session.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye.
Okay, and the link is in your email box, hopefully, and we'll see you there in a minute. Thank you. Thanks, Justin.
Yep, Tracy just sent it out, so you should have it.
Great.
Okay.
Great, everyone. Good evening, everybody. We opened a little bit earlier, and then went into executive session. We're now back into our public session. I'll just read our obligatory Zoom language, and then we'll get started. Cory, Sleckman Cory Evans, a select board member Cory Evans is going to be delayed, but he hopefully will get here soon. Tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohasset 143 TV and on Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is also invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant. All votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to be heard on matters on the agenda, if you're a guest on that topic, you will be promoted. Otherwise, we ask that you raise your hand, and we will promote you for questions once the board has had an opportunity to to have their discussion. We are not going to be monitoring the question and answer feature. So I ask people not to use that. If you want to speak to the board, we'll ask you to, again, raise your hand and participate that way. This meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV, and also, I think all of our meetings are uploaded on YouTube shortly after they happen. So the first thing on our agenda is public comment for items not on the agenda. So if there is a member or resident who's interested in speaking during public comment period, if you could raise your hand, and we'll promote you to speak. I'll just give that a minute, and then we'll move on with our agenda. We have a big night. We're closing the warrant for annual town meeting. And okay. Okay, I don't see any public comment. Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda after public comment is the alternative location for election at Willcut Commons. Chris, do you want to just kind of brief us what this is?
Yeah, so the
Standard.
Yeah, the clerk every year needs to have the board, this board authorize an alternative location for election in case Town Hall is unavailable for whatever reason. And at least for the last five years, that has been Willcut Commons. So the recommendation is that, again, be set, and it can be done for up to two-year increments. So just as, so if you do it now for another two years, it'll cover you for this year's town election, and there's no other election this year. And then it'll also be for the gubernatorial election next year and the primary and the town election next year. So it'll be one election this year. Again, it's, the plan is to stay in Town Hall, right? So this is just an emergency location.
Right, okay. We have the text for a motion that was in our packet. If somebody would like to read it?
Make a motion. We use alternative location election at Willcut Commons. The motion is to vote to designate the Cohasset Senior Center, also known as Willcut Commons at 91 Sawyer Street, as the alternative voting location for all of the elections through December 31, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, beginning with Jack?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye.
Alrighty. Great, thank you.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Is there a way to do it more than two years, or is that just Mass. A. Law?
Carol indicates to me that it's up to two years, which I'm gathering needs in the law. So yeah, that's the way it works, apparently.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. So next on our agenda is a request from the Red Lion Inn for a temporary extension of premises due to COVID, and this relates to use of outdoor space. So I think we've promoted representatives. There's Guillermo Severdans, hey Guillermo. And if you don't mind, just briefly telling us in the public what your request is, and we'll go from there.
Absolutely, yes. So we have a couple requests, and so just to promote the outdoor dining and the extension of premises due to COVID, we have the deck and beer garden on the Red Lion Tavern facing on the Sussman Street side that are now permitted May 15 through September 15. So we're requesting if we could open as early as possible and then possibly close the premises, basically extend ahead of time and then a little longer all the way through October.
Okay.
Then the second request would be, in principle, to allow the second floor deck to be able to have guests from the inn, guests from the restaurant, and guests from events to do some dining with limited hours, but same timeframe up till November, just to promote the outdoor COVID safety dining.
Okay, so so the first is basically the deck area on South Main Street, and that's just to change the dates from May 15 through September 15 to April 20, or as soon as tomorrow, April, we could even say April 28 through October. Did you have a date? I'm sorry, I don't have.
Yeah, I think we said November 1st.
November 1st, okay. And then the second is extending the use of the the deck, and can you just describe where that deck is, Guillermo?
Really, so it's on the, on the second floor of the inn, adjacent to the two banquet halls, the barn and the hillside house, before the pool area, which the pool is all fenced up. But we do have this little deck area, there's about 200 feet from one of our neighbors and then 300 feet from the other set of neighbors, and is literally adjacent to some of the rooms of the inn. And that way we could promote, I believe we requested from 11:00 AM till 8:00 PM in order to facilitate some some guests from the inn, from the restaurant, from the town, some Cohasset guests as well, and then some event guests possibly to facilitate the outdoor, limited hours, but outdoor throughout the summer.
Thank, before we move on to questions, Tracy or Justin, can you promote Cory? He very politely raised his hand, and if there is somebody in the public who would like to speak before we take votes, please raise your hand. Welcome, Cory.
Thank you, my apologies.
Not a problem. Any questions for Guillermo on the spaces or? Carrie?
Just a quick comment. I had the chance to view the property and all the improvements they've made a few days ago, and I'm really impressed with it, and it seems like they've really taken a lot of the neighbors' concerns to heart, and the landscaping looked great, and I'm just really impressed with all the work that Guillermo and everyone has put into it. So, thank you, Guillermo. It's nice to have you as a business in town, and I think we should move forward and support all of these things.
Great, thank you, Carrie. Jack?
A couple of clarifications. In the packet, you say that the nearest neighbors are 200 and 300 feet away, and then it's another thing that seemed to suggest that you were going to a private courtyard. Have you spoken to the neighbors who would be impacted? And have you done, yes, and have you done like a sound test?
We have not done the sound test. I believe there used to be some sound equipment on the property that STI have to put back in circulation, I want to say. It's probably pretty outdated, but I can definitely work on this. But I did meet with the couple of our direct neighbors last week, and we've been in contact throughout all the progress and all the modifications that we're trying to do to their benefit and to everybody's benefit. And we met on Friday and did a full walkthrough regarding the fence, regarding some of the other topics, but as well to show them the two items on the agenda for tonight, just to discuss it and to see if there is any major concerns or any objections. And both, both neighbors seem to be, I want to say, in content with it, and that there was not major issue, and especially because we're limiting the times as well, to make sure we respect their privacy as well.
And you've contacted, sent certified letters or something, ensuring contact with all the impacted people and the butters?
No, I have not, no.
Just, and just for clarification, Cory's hand is up. This, this, this is not a a request to change the license in any way. This is really just to take advantage of the opportunity to expand premises outdoors, given the COVID restrictions for indoor dining, which arguably might, will change at some point, but this is really just a temporary COVID thing. You know, there would be a whole level and including a hearing if there was conditions being changed on the actual license.
But you are expanding. So the question is whether we have assurances or some kind of documentation that all the impacted residents have been notified and have indicated that they approve it, and whether this is temporary or permanent, that's kind of not particularly relevant to my question. I just want to make sure that there isn't somebody who's going to be impacted who hasn't been told about it. That's simple fairness.
There has not been any, apart from emails and phone calls and actual meetings with the neighbors, no, there has not been any official certified letters.
So we don't really know if all the neighbors are in favor or not in favor, or even know about it? Well, I mean, yes or no? I mean, it's
No, I mean, I, I
Okay.
Don't want to ask you to take my word for it, but, you know.
Cory?
Yeah, I just was, Diane, you pretty much answered my question, or just clarification. It was very clear on the application that there are, there's not a change of time here, that we're not changing operating hours. You know, that's something we discussed earlier, and that's something that we'll have to have a larger hearing about. This is just extension of outdoor and for deck usage and kind of extending the dates of those, of those deck usages. And as that being my understanding, I support this. I think that, you know, outdoor dining is, you know, safe on the economic task force. We've been talking with, you know, restaurants and people about what what they'd like to see, and outdoor dining is kind of the thing that universally our residents are requesting. So I'm glad that you're, you have a lot of really cool, cool, really nice porches, and I am excited for the residents to take advantage of some covered area to have, to have a dinner and maybe a drink. So with that understanding, I think I can support what you're proposing here.
Thank you. And yeah, I want to emphasize that it is a temporary request, absolutely. This is not, not yet a full official amendment to the license.
Correct. So we have, Jen has raised her hand, but I'm going to go to Paul Schubert first, and then Jen Oram, I'll come to you.
So I also, the walkthrough, and it looks like it's a very reasonable approach to try to get more outdoor dining, at least in the situation of the current pandemic. It's, it's a means for the, to help one of the businesses in town, one of the anchors of the businesses in town. And I think it's pretty well shielded on the back. They, they did, when I did the walkthrough, they showed where they're trying to place a little bit of sound wall between the deck and the neighbors and outdoors dining is, I think it's going to become a much more popular dining function in the future. This is, again, a temporary extension of, really of location, but I'm in favor of it. That's it.
Thank you. Jen?
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay?
You can.
All right, I just wanted to just jump on the licensing portion, and that the two patios that were extending the times by the month are already licensed. So they're just extending the timeframe there, and the deck is the only thing that is the COVID extension. And we did request that they reach out to those direct butters, which Guillermo did, and meet with them regarding these changes. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? I don't see, Jack, your hand?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to this. What I'm concerned about is, and thank you, Jen, that clarification was very helpful, was the letting the neighbors, you know, know that, and my understanding is, Guillermo, you had indicated that you hadn't spoken to all the neighbors. Now, if you have, if, you know, if you've notified them, then, but you said that you hadn't, and that's a matter of concern. So I'm not opposed to this expansion or what they're trying to do per se. Just, I just want people to know.
So I mentioned that I did reach out, and we did meet with Mr. and Mrs. Carr and Mr. and Mrs. Diipol. I have not reached out to all the surrounding neighbors, but those are the main concerned parties at some of the sound issues and the history issues, I want to say. But yes, I did reach out to them. There's no certified letters. That's what I meant.
And for these COVID, you know, we've, we've extended premises all throughout town, you know, and
I'm aware of that, yeah.
And we wouldn't want to, I'm just saying, we wouldn't want to require one business to have to send certified letters and not another. So I think we're clear on this.
Just, I asked as an example, certified letters, but I really didn't want to make sure that there's nobody who's going to be directly impacted by that, who was unaware of it. If Guillermo, to assure me that you made sure that everybody would be impacted, is connected and perfectly, you know, I would support this.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Do they need to be two separate ones, or can we do?
We can do, we can do one motion, but it should, it should note the specific spaces and the dates.
So I'll make a motion that we permit the date of outdoor dining from 4/28/2021 to 11/1/2021 in the area delineated in the presentation.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Cory Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye.
Great, thank you very much, Guillermo. Let's look forward to great weather and lots of activity throughout town.
Safe dining, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you all very much.
And then you want a second motion for the, for the rear deck?
Yeah. Oh, you want to do that separately? Okay, because you said as we could do that.
I make a motion that we permit outdoor dining on the rear deck as delineated from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, from 4/28/2021 to 11/1/2021, according to the COVID recommendations.
Second.
Great, okay. We have a motion in a second. So we'll do a roll call vote, beginning with Jack?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Cory Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye.
Great, okay. Now, thank you. Good night, Guillermo. Appreciate your being here. Okay, now we've come to a momentous time in our, in our select board calendar, which is, we're going to eventually finalize the annual town meeting warrant and take votes on pending articles that we have not yet voted on. We have a few presentations. So with that, Chris, do you want to tee this up in any way, or should we jump right in?
The order that you have in the warrant, I think, is, and the agenda is how you kind of go through it, and I believe that Bill is right. There he is.
Okay.
Ready to start you off. You had requested that the sewer commission come in. You have two of the three members. Since they're both here, they might want to call a meeting officially into order, and then you're all set.
All right, so I will call a meeting into order, and President, our Bill McGowan and Paul Kears.
Great, thank you. And then so we, we touched upon this. This is Article 4, which is sewer rate restructuring. We had recommendations from the advisory board, eight to nothing, and from the sewer commission, recommended by a vote of three to nothing, this article. So Bill, if you want to have the floor to kind of walk us through what this means.
Well, thank you for having us. You know, it's always sort of against our, our ilk to ask for more money, but in this case, we have to. And I, and if I can ask Tracy to throw the presentation up that I submitted, and I can go through that very quickly with you.
Okay, one sec.
So basically, we're, we're in a point where we, even though we don't want to be coming before you with hat in hand saying we need a rate increase, we need it. And I'm going to go through the, very quickly, the reasons why. They are not significant, but there were costs associated with the change from our past operating, our plant operator Suez to Woodard and Curran, and I'll talk about that specifically. We're going to go through the cost of living and electricity rate increases over the past nine years. Now, I'm going to give you a very close synopsis of that. We have placed in some Excel files some of the empirical data as to what's going on. We're going to go through previous sewer rate increases, comparison to the surrounding towns. One of the things we wanted to do, which is sort of a quick sewer rate study, is to find out what everyone else is doing around us, so that you have an idea, and then talk about our capital contribution. So if we go to the next, yeah. So we have Suez as an operator, actually hired before my time, up until 2018. Their monthly run rate was 56,650. In 2018, we signed Woodard and Curran, who was also the operator in Hull, at a monthly run rate of 76,446. Before I get down to the last point, I will tell you the letter, the level of effort, the level of benefit to the town and the level of just absolute acumen and experience and excellence is is fantastic. These guys have helped us do things that we never got with the other folks. We have had, they have taken it upon themselves to give us an entire plant asset management system, where they have actually put together a capital planning system, capital plan for us, which we will be submitting. Actually, we have submitted, but they've been fantastic. So the, what you see in the $10,000 per month rate increase is insignificant in the contribution they're giving to this town. Both of them also have the ability, given the contracts they have, to true up costs of electricity and what have you. As I will go through with electricity, Suez used to pay our electric bill, and then we didn't really know exactly what it was, and we are now paying it. So there's a, there's a difference in there. This is coming from data that I got off of several different websites, both in, so Massachusetts industrial and commercial. We've been going up over the past nine years approximately 3.5% a year, and you can see the total increase. They're quite, is quite large. And it's, I wish we had, and maybe we do, but I know, I think the town buys on something, but even when we bought through Suez, the rates were going up probably the same amount. And it's just, I think, a sign of the times that electricity is becoming more and more expensive as we talk. The mass cost of living rate, there are lots of different places you can go to. I went to mass.gov, got this one at 3.76. If you go to the US rate with the state of Massachusetts, they're a little bit above that, or almost, almost at 4%, but I'll take the lower one. And, and looking at some of the data as to, if we go to the next slide. Yeah, if we can go to the, Tracy, can you pull up the slide on the the rate study?
Yep. Yeah, one second.
You're much quicker than I would be.
I'm going to refrain from cracking a joke, right?
Be nice, Diane.
You were going to, it's going to be at your expense.
You stare at my plaid shirt. It looks just like the spreadsheet.
I was looking at that earlier today.
It's my 250 Cohasset.
I saw that. I don't have.
Very on-brand. Good work. Oh, there's another one.
All right, Paul, you shame me into it.
Yeah, the mad hatter.
Tracy, you raised your hand. Chris, while she's pulling it up, you know, just because Bill mentioned the cost of electricity being so significant, which clearly it is, you know, I wonder if, you know, over the next year or so, we can work with the enterprise funds and alternative energy to find some creative savings that can be passed along to the enterprise funds as well as the town.
And I can add something to that. When we purchased our new membranes a year or so ago, because of a catastrophic failure, it's just a redesign that they need more air and require more blower service for us to actually get them to work at an efficient manner. So there's, there's sort of a combination of both the rate increase, the rate increases of electricity, and then the fact that we that we have. I'm going to throw my glasses on on this one. So these are the, these are the rate increases going back to basically 2001 and what we did.
Wow.
So you can see what we're asking for right now. So we're asking for, basically, what we're, basically, we're asking for a 10% rate increase. We are not increasing the quarterly fee, which we have done in the past, but you can see back in 2003, there was a 34% rate increase. And, you know, I won't say it's adhorrent to us to be asking for this, but it really is painful, because for the past five, six, seven, eight years, we've been really trying to do a zero-based increase. We have not really, we haven't had an increase until 2017. But we've had a lot of changes in the way that we do our, our production, the costs that we have for all of our, just operating expenses, just all the chemicals and what have you that come in, and the electricity that we have to buy. So Tracy, if we could go back to the presentation, that'd be great. Thank you. Tracy, if we could go back to the presentation, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay, this is sort of the last slide, but I think we can go to another one in a minute.
No way you want to be.
Yeah, here we go. Go to the next one if you don't mind. Not, we've already talked about this. Yeah, we did that. Yeah. So if you could go to that one, the the Excel sheet that talks about what the our surrounding towns are charging.
If folks can understand too, that based on that prior spreadsheet, there was a five year period where rates went up 100%. And since 2007, including this 10% increase, the town would have experienced about a 1.42% increase in rates year over year from 2007 until now to include this 10%. So the 10% sounds like a lot today. If you calculate that with the 2017, it's it's half of the cost of living adjustment that most people incur in other expenses throughout the state.
So with this slide, it basically tells you, so this was our quick sewer rate study. You see what Cohasset is doing with our base fee, which is the quarterly, and then our usage per cubic foot under cubic feet. You see where Hingham is, you see where Hull is, and you see where Situit is. Now, Situit has a lower footprint as far as sewer coverage. Hull has been going up basically 10 or 15% a year to cover some of their capital replacement costs that they're doing. So you know, I think it would be self-serving if I was to give us a mark as to how we're doing this, but I think we're doing all right. So because we're really trying to keep the cost down to where we aren't penalizing our sewer ratepayers any more than they have to be in this case. So.
Great. And are we going back to the PowerPoint? Oh, Paul Schubert has a question.
Whatever the next slide was, yeah, please.
But one quick question is, I know you're doing it every several years. You go up by 10%. Is there an easier way to do it? Maybe every couple of years, looking at a, you know, cost of living adjustment like you would do with, you know, a general business that you might increase saying, well, each year we're we're probably going to see an increase in electricity, fuel, maintenance, salaries, those sorts of things. That's all.
So, yeah, we have talked about that. I have to tell you, I'm not a, I mean, and is this just a personal thing? I'm not a fan of raising rates every year. Because I think that we would get more abrasion from the ratepayers if we did that versus doing it when we need it. And, you know, over the, since 2017, we've actually been very good in keeping the rates down to and our cost down to a point where we don't need it. So I'd like to go another four or five years out and keep the costs where they are. And then if we need to go do another rate, we do that.
Yeah. So so rates have only been raised once since 2007. Then if you include this rate increase, that would be two since 2007. And as I stated, that that equals about a 1.4% increase per year since 2007. So it is half of the cost of living adjustment. So if we did look at implementing a plan where we did some sort of cost of living adjustment, the ratepayers would see an adjustment of at least one and a half percent every year. And it may not be needed in our our facilities. The only thing that really is driving our cost is is electricity. I think we're paying Bill 250,000 a year in electricity.
Yeah.
Somewhere on there. So that's really where the focus of savings energies would have to be put to see what we can do to help.
Corey has a question.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I got to echo what Paul just brought up. I think that, you know, at minimum, a cost of living adjustment would be pretty warranted. I think that, you know, a 10% shock at kind of random intervals to me feels a little bit like, you know, and based on what you're telling us, you know, we're behind stuff. So, you know, we're doing this to kind of catch up to where we need to be. And, you know, I'm left wondering, there is there stuff that, you know, are we missing money in the capital fund or are we missing things that we could have been doing? If we hadn't kind of stayed on with rates. And I think, I mean, 10% increases is a big ask for people. And to me, it just seems, you know, a little more equitable to do it in smaller chunks than kind of wait till it's too late and then do a large chunk. At least for the CLI increase, you know, that's.
Yeah, it is. It is certainly a factor of the citizen abrasion rate that you get on either of these two things. And if we were to do it on an incremental basis every year, I'm guaranteeing it would be the same amount of abrasion that we would get if we did it on, you know, every four to five years. I just, I just feel that it's more equitable to the ratepayers of the town to not charge them for something we don't need. And, you know, we have, we have certain things that we do and we'll get to it in the last slide when we talk about our capital stabilization thing for for purchasing some of our major elements that we really try to put into our budget. The monies that will take care of the major elements of our capital replacement and and really keep keep costs down to our to our to our ratepayers.
So just just to on that topic, I I'm anxious to hear about capital because I think that's the piece that is really critical. And and I think the challenge, especially with our enterprise funds, is in order to make a rate, they can't raise rates like, you know, Comcast can or the supermarket can. They have to go to town meeting. And town meeting is, as as they should be fairly demanding in terms of, you know, requesting rate studies and and metrics. So I think the idea of an annual increase is much more palatable to most people's pockets. But I don't know that it makes sense in the case that you have to go to town meeting every every year to ask for that. Corey, follow up and then we'll get to the capital slide.
Well, I'm just, I'm wondering about that and a little bit of creative thinking here. You know, if we had a rate study that projected rates over the next five years, you know, where we said, okay, you know, there's going to be a 2% or one and a half or one and a half, one and a half. Where would that leave us after five years when it comes to capital planning, you know, cash flow, those kind of things versus, you know, doing it in five years and then try to figure out how much we have to catch up for. I think that's a perspective. And then if the town understands that, hey, you know, at least we're going to build in the cost of living adjustment, then I think, I don't, I think that's an ask that that our residents can understand, especially if it's backed up with information that this was planned for. So just just a little bit of pushback on that idea.
Yeah, I think I do think that that's kind of how Water has approached it. So.
And and we've heard, you know, we've heard good, bad and ugly about that. So I mean, that's why we're trying to like, okay, we don't want to raise our rates every single year. So.
So capital.
Can I talk? So this capital has, it's only looking at our membranes, which is basically the heart of our sewer system. 11, 12 years ago, we started a $100,000 a year allotment for our capital stabilization account. And this basically was allotted for our membranes. And in 20, we had a catastrophic failure of our membranes and we never went back to the town. We had the cash. And I think in part of that, we were able to, as part of our negotiation with General Electric and Suez, who bought the membrane company, I think we were able to, we were able to establish a fund of approximately 1.1 million. And over the, over the years, and we were able to buy not only the membranes, but we were also be able to to put into a SCADA system that basically has a digital analysis and reporting of all of our pump stations and our plants. So anybody on the on the Woodard and Curran side can remotely access it. We want to continue that so that whoever is on the sewer board in 10 or 11 years won't get caught with a one to 1.1 million dollar capital charge that they may not have expected when the membranes die, which they certainly will. So this is part of what we do in our budget.
Great. Any questions on that? Jack?
Yeah, I think the good capital planning and budgeting certainly showed how effective that is. And I think the sewer board's done a very good job on this. And I think the town knows them a debt of of gratitude for, because capital planning, you have to plan ahead. And if you don't, it's a disaster. And if you do, we had a very, very serious catastrophe happen. And it was handled, you know, very well with minimal financial things because the capital planning was in place. So, well done.
Any other comments? You know, I think, I think we have a lot ahead of us with sewer in terms of regional options and you know, who knows what else is around the corner in terms of of capital because of these discussions with potentially, you know, expanding the the district and, you know, investing in new capital projects. So I, I, you know, I nobody likes this kind of a rate increase. I mean, we have it with water as well. And it's it's a tough year for for this kind of thing. But I think we're going to know, I think, to some degree, we're catching up. The the capital, I'd love to see much more capital planning and potentially a rate study to to address what Corey's talking about, which is, you know, some kind of a longer term plan. But I also don't know what the sewer district or department is going to look like over the next 18 to 24 months, given some of the discussions taking place. So I'm inclined to support this and we'll see where we're at next year.
Yeah, if I could add one thing, we have, and I'm, I'm going to say, I think we've sent it to capital planning, but we have a very comprehensive analysis of all the capital needs of our plant and our system. And we have asked Woodard and Curran to come back to us with a a way of prioritizing exactly what they want, you know, what they, well, excuse me, not what they want, but what they need to keep the plant running and the system running at the level it is right now.
Great. That's, that's terrific. And anyway, no more comments. Anybody? So we have this, this article is on our warrant. It has been recommended to town meeting by a vote of eight to zero by advisory. Also by the sewer commission unanimously. And if there's a vote to recommend this, an emotion.
Make a motion. We recommend to town meeting floor, Article Four, Article Four, the sewer rate restructuring.
Roll call, please.
You need a second.
Made and seconded. Roll call.
There you go. Thanks, Jack. Roll call, please.
Jack Creighton, aye.
We're having time.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. Okay.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Go forth. Thanks for your diligence. Thanks for stepping up, Paul.
Yeah, so I have a motion to adjourn the sewer commission.
Oh, thank you, Paul. And I agree.
All right. Thank you.
Say aye. It's just so awkward. Our parliamentarians just shaking his head down there. Sorry, it's really hard when you're looking at squares all day, you know, to to stay on top of things. Next, bumpa-dum-bum is the operating budget.
So do I put a little dollar signs over people as we, we make a ticket board? Is that how we do that?
Yeah, that would be great.
So this is why, so I just, this is the biggest, the biggest vote, obviously, I think of the whole warrant. There's lots of information. You've heard a ton of information. I think over the last couple of months, you've also received a ton of information, including the unperfected, needed to be added, it's like somewhat version of the the budget book. So that said, the numbers were good. There were some, some grammatical things and some spelling errors that we need to fix. That, that said, I, the 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 package, I think, has been pretty comprehensive. And so do you, do you want me to walk through a little bit, Diane? Some of the highlights?
Yeah, I do think if you could walk through some of the highlights, I have a few questions, not many. But we'll take it from there.
You know, the two, the, the, there's lots of pieces this year. And you've now walked through Water and Sewer. Water and Sewer had a, you know, a very comprehensive conversations about rates and their long-term budget and their long-term capital. And I think there was a lot of conversation and, you know, Water's been at this now for over a year. They were planning to come to last year's town meeting. So, you know, they they actually delayed a bit. So that, there's been a really big, robust conversation. You've now voted for both of the, for both of those. So the budget job in front of you now represent a kind of an all in at this point. There was a very good conversation with schools. You've seen that. Basically, where we are is, is, you know, cautiously optimistic, I guess, is the best way to put it. There's still some holes that we plugged because we're not really quite sure how things are going to shake out. We really, I mean, are people going to go back to buying cars? By the way, can people buy cars? Because of supply chain challenges. Are they even available out there as much as they were? What, what's going to happen with restaurants? Now, we got some really good news today, right? I mean, this is like really, we're kind of working this day by day, right? Bars are reopening in a couple of, in a month or so, restaurants are now getting the restrictions loosened. So we could be looking at a more normal summer. And that's, that's hopeful. So maybe we'll see some of that revenue pop back up. And, you know, we've already seen that there's most certainly a lot of real estate activity going on. We don't know how that translates quite yet. Both in terms of the tax base itself and also in terms of fees and growth, though there's been some promising signs. At the same time, the state is still working through its challenges. There's been some good news, and I know Paul Schubert reads those reports more closely than they think the Department of Revenue does at the state. And that, and there's been some positive signs. That's, and and obviously, we have this, this new recovery act money coming through too. Which we'll talk about a little bit later in the agenda. So there are good signs. That said, this is a conservative budget. It maintains services. It doesn't expand. It does address one year for contract renewals for everybody. All the collective bargaining agreements and a comparative and a matching increase for non-collective bargaining employees. And it puts us, it allows us to continue to assess where we are. It also, as you know, puts in, you know, money. We had a more reduced capital plan last year. This year's kind of catches up a bit because there were clearly some, some items. The school track being a very visible one, right? The air handler is not being so visible. Equally important. You know, we got to get the air handlers done. I think we've all learned a lot more about air handling in the last year and a half of this pandemic than we ever would have wanted to know. That said, the track and the field is are very visible and critically important to the towns. Not just the varsity and junior varsity teams and the students that use them all the time. I was up there a couple of weeks ago looking at the field. And we'll talk more about location of town meeting in a second. The, and it's used by kids for, you know, recess and gym. So and plus people walk it on the weekends and in the evening. So it's a really, really important asset and maintaining it at a safe and high quality levels really important. So there's a lot of very important projects in the capital plan. And operationally, you know, again, it, we're, we're maintaining the commitment to OPEB long term. We're maintaining the town's long-term commitment to funding capital in a reasonable and appropriate way. We're continuing to up resource our facilities department and making sure that that the skill level of the staff gets higher and higher. And which allows us to maintain the buildings better. Right? So the longer term, the better proactive we are in maintenance and those resources there to continue to maintain that staff and to continue to put a few dollars aside to help them, you know, leap ahead from time to time of special projects. So I think it's a, it's a little bit in there for everybody. There's a lot of things that people want, right? But you know, you can't budget for what you want. You got a budget for what you need. And we always look at the wants, whether it's on the school side or the town side. And often the goal is to find, well, always the goal is to find a way to fulfill that need without hiring more people, right? Oftentimes you find it's training, you add skills. Maybe you just need a consultant for a few hours as opposed to hiring a full-time employee. Maybe it's change how you deliver the service. We've had a lot of that happen, obviously, the last year. So we're still evolving on that front too. Are there better ways to provide services? We're going to see some more retirements. I have no doubt over the next year or so. We've had a couple of big ones this year. We've had a big change in the building department and now with facilities. And it gives us both a challenge and an opportunity to continue to evolve how we provide services and and meet the the very significant goals that all of you set out every year. So I think the budget is, is pretty comprehensive. I think it's also pretty conservative. The overall rate of increase is really just, I think, just a hair over two percent, if I recall, because we've had savings. You know, one of the things that we constantly manage too is finding ways to save, whether it's more efficiencies, and again, a lot of that's on energy. There's always more to go, as you pointed out earlier, Diane, with sewer. There's always more to go to find ways to save money. At the same time, we've made some real savings, which has really helped the school and it's helped the town sign. The, there's been small savings even with the electric vehicles, right? When I'm paying reimbursements at the same moment. Now, that may be thousands of dollars, not hundreds of thousands of dollars, but it all adds up. And it also has had a positive, we cannot, environmental impact. And in terms of, of staff, you know, we've held the line. You know, we've, we, we replace when we need. Obviously, we have key staff in key positions now that weren't here seven or eight years ago because the town said we want them, because planning mattered. And in order to have plans, you have to prepare. And then you have to implement, and you have to have people who, whose full-time job it is to make sure things continue to move along the way. All of you, 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 the, you, this group, and then the whole town as a whole, sets that vision. And then it's, it's, you're saying, go, go forth and make it happen collaboratively. So I think, again, this is a conservative document. The budget book, which I, I, I hope you've all had a chance to look at, with, it's still with some more updates. Every year, we get a little bit better. If you saw this year, what's in there, there's two new pieces. One is some performance metrics, which we have not had before, so you can actually see. And they, they've always existed, we just haven't produced them the same way. So I think it's a great thing for folks to see, you know, what is the tax collection, right? Right? How, you know, how, how many, you know, how many miles of road are we paving? All of those kinds of things that are in, that are in that document. And then also, goals, you know, the, the board has, has set goals now consistently for a number of years. And we now have a, we're in the second year of a really good process with the board set, sets this kind of high benchmark, and then we kind of fill it in and circle back. So we've done, because the reporting in the department level has some more specifics in there. We, we're tying them back to those goals. Have to write the goal section, by the way, around your goals upfront, so people can understand how it ties back. But if you saw in some of the documentation, you'll see, you know, G1, G2, G3, those tie back to goals that all of you set. So I, I think it helps eliminate how much work goes on to, to move those goals forward. So the budget document, the one we just finished last year, won an award for the second time. We're upping the game again this year in that budget book. So whether, when everyone can get a chance to look at it online fairly soon, but definitely with plenty of time before town meeting to read it. It, it will be even more comprehensive than ever. So I'm not doing a PowerPoint. I think you've seen all of those. I think you've probably seen, PowerPointed out. But I'm happy to answer any questions. And Donna, if there's something you want to highlight, jump right in.
Do you want to jump in, John? Are you good?
I think you've covered it all, Chris. Thank you. Sorry for the delay.
Just, Paul?
So, yeah, I just want to kind of some, some cautionary, you know, looking forward this next year. You know, as you know, I, I do look at the, the monthly revenues from the state. And it's interesting that the income tax withholding, this is only half, halfway through the month. It's up ninety-nine percent for both withholding and estimated tax payments. But that's a reflection of how bad it was last year, this month, where the unemployment skyrocketing, everything was shut down. Despite that, you know, the, the year-to-date as of now, the tax revenues for the state are still up about ten point nine percent. So it was a pretty ugly year last year, but it's come back almost eleven percent from last year. So, you know, a little bit of, you know, positive caution there. I, I suspect there's a lot of pent-up demand, so things like entertainment, dining, new cars, things like that are likely going to start to see the economy open up much faster than I would have, honestly, would have expected. So the, I guess, from the cautionary point of view from the town, next year may be better than we think, but, you know, it will depend on how it goes. The other thing is those one-year contracts for a lot of the, the, the trans-COVID year, we're going to have to look at that again next year. So that will be a hurdle we'll have to look at. Those are the, those are my thoughts.
Any other comments? I have some, but the operating, Jack, were you raising?
Yeah, yeah. The only question I have is, is that I'm glad we're looking at some of the compensation and, and, and how the various duties that the town needs are, are handled. And I've been a little bit challenged in trying to figure this out because I had requested about five months ago a list of the structural, the employment structure of the town ten years ago, as far as the various, who was doing what and where, what compensation, whatever, versus what it is today. And I never received that. And I thought there was a reasonable request by a member of the select board. So although I'm pretty much in favor of this, I, I must say that it's a bit of a challenge to try to make a decision when information has been requested, it's not provided.
Carrie, Corey?
I just want to, so we have been working on that. It, it's not as simple as just pushing a button, spinning out names because things have, there's been a fairly big change in how things are, how things are set up. For example, there wasn't a planning right before, so, and departments have been reorganized a bit. So we have been working on, on something like that, both not just for now, but at, at the, at the request of you and other members of the board, but also going forward because I think it's a really helpful thing to do. At the same time, it hasn't proven to be quite as easy because of the way some people are classified. And the, so we are, it's, it's, it's still, it is, it is still a work in progress. That said, the budget book itself does have, you know, the year-to-date, the year-to-year comparison of headcount. And again, some of it, some of it gets a little confusing with the schools, just the way they refer to people. And it's, it's not that it's, I'm not trying to be secret, you know, you saw the presentation they did. And on our side, too, it's how some people classify, right? So it's, it's, there hasn't, the, the, we're trying to do this in a comprehensive way to give a, you know, an analysis. And, you know, when it didn't exist before, you have to kind of create it from all clock because it's not just a set of numbers. Because there are really different positions that didn't exist before. When I first started, and I'll stop with this, the select board said, we need a human resource function. Took two years to figure out exactly how that was going to, you know, jumped in a little bit with some consulting, that turned into something part-time, and now it's a department. Really was just one, one and three-quarter people in it. So I think that context is really important, and we have been working on it. That said, with everything else going on, we're not as far along, we don't, we don't have it done. So we are, it, it is most definitely something that's being worked on, and I look forward to presenting it to all of you for the long range, too, because I think it's important.
Well, that's, I'm aware of that, and, and that's why I, rather than a comprehensive, I just asked for a headcount number of, of that because that's very easy to do. And I'm glad you're working on it. Is there any particular reason in my, in my request to you for that, to the town manager, for that information, if you've been working upon it? This is the first time that you've told me about anything that was going on. I would have hoped that you would have reached out and said, yes, Selectman Creighton, you've asked for this, we're working on it, and can we work together? But I have to bring it up some months later in a budget hearing. And, and I also was very aware when I asked that, that it might be some challenges. I, that's why I specifically said just a headcount ten years ago and today's, and then without asking you to kind of mesh that. And this is the first time I've heard of it. And so at least, you know, now I am hearing about it. Thank you, Chris.
Corey had his hand up, and then Carrie.
Yeah, the one thing that just, and this was just top-level, apologies if we, if we ran over this early and I missed it. But I just saw, I mean, everything is, you know, as Chris said, you know, I think it was prudent for us to kind of keep things on pause due to one-year increases and just kind of keep everything within the realm of safety, I think would be a good word for that. I did see that, that looks like for twenty twenty, for twenty-two, the pension assessment went up quite a bit. That was the only piece there, just if you want to expand upon that just a little bit, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, so that is based on a new valuation. New valuation is done at Norfolk County level every two years. Updated annually for financial statement purposes, but they do a whole new valuation every two years. So that increase was based on two parts. One, evaluation results. And then it's then allocated to cities and towns that are within Norfolk County based on headcount. And so from one year to the next, but two, from two years ago till now, that equated to a twenty-three percent increase. Now, some of the information was a little bad. Handful of people that were, were duplicated in there. We pled our case to Norfolk County that, you know, the process for taking that, the names off that headcount is, is, their, their response to me was not clear, was not great. They said, it's, well, you know, our, our actuary says it's really, it would come out in the wash year over year, which again, isn't good for us, isn't a good answer. You know, Corey, I'd have to say, I, I probably spent hours back and forth. And it got to a point where, you know, I kept expressing more concerns. And, you know, the gentleman I spoke to, quite frankly, just said, look, Donna, I, I've, I've tried to help you. I, I can't, I can't keep doing this. So that, that's really the big issue. The allocation, again, the biggest portion is just the valuation data. It's kind of out of our control. It's, I'd be happy to share and go over that, that valuation. But I believe it was a hundred million dollar actuarial loss for this valuation cycle. And so again, that all gets trickled down to the communities that are within that county retirement system. And unfortunately, it just, it shook out that we really got whacked this year.
Hold that county thought for a later discussion. Carrie?
Yeah, I know we have our later discussion about the recovery plan and possible county money in general, but my question was related to that as well. Depending on what we find out from that in terms of how much we're getting, do we think that would be influencing this budget in the next year? Or is that pretty much stable regardless of what the recovery money ends up being?
Yeah, we, we're not going to use the recovery money to fill any budget holes at this point. It, it, the, what we prefer to use it for, and again, it can be used for lots of purposes, would be for, you know, capital and, and one-time costs, because this is a one-time, you know, grant. So you, you don't want to get yourself in a position where you're budgeting for day-to-day items that are recurring with money that's all going to come at you once. So that, if, if it does have any impact, it would be, you know, if there's some PPE or something like that, we can acquire through a grant, something like that. But it, it, we're not going to use it, there are no plans to use it for any, any operating expenses.
Yeah, the, the, the two things I took away from reading through the line items was exactly the Norfolk County pension and, and it, which is one reason it makes the PEB liability and that PEB committee's work so important, too, is really staying on top of these valuations and the trends and where that's all going, and it's just complicated. And then the other thing was, and I think I've already answered my question, which was the school resource officer I noticed was in the, the town budget as opposed to buried in the police department or buried in the, the school department budget. So I, I take it that just means that that's kind of above the line, as we call it.
It's been, it's considered a shared resource.
A shared expense, yeah.
So, so it's not, I mean, he's still a police officer, right? That, that said, he's budgeted outside of the police budget because most of the time, he's at the schools, not all the time. I mean, the summers, obviously, he tends to work more on the rec side and do other things, too. And he's working with school, just in a different capacity. That's been like that since the budget, since the position was created. It was always been up there. And by the way, just to, to go back to your point, Diane. So I think that the pension and the healthcare exhibit two very distinctly different approaches. One, yeah, I know, no, but, but one is very
Total opposite, yeah.
One, one, right, one is very opaque and one is very transparent. So we've been able to work very cooperatively with Maya. When I got here, we were hit with this giant increase. And I'm like, I'm here like three months, you got to give me this giant increase, what do you, thank you. So, but we've developed a really good relationship, not just me, and I've learned it, and all of our staff. But the town has really taken full advantage of all that partnership. And again, it, it's a consortium of governments. As a result, we've been able to hold our healthcare costs level. And this year, we actually were able to reduce them. Now, that's, there's a lot of reasons for that, but the, the single core reason is that we have active engagement with our health insurance and they are, and they with us, right? It's not just the one-way street. There's shared savings, there's shared opportunities, and there's a lot of transparence, which is great. On the Norfolk County side, it, it's just not that way. It's, it's much more opaque, and part of it is, is just the, the actuarial, it's, it's all actuary, right? I mean, it's all, I don't want to say it's all hypothetical because obviously, there's core basis, there's people attached with salaries and potential pension liabilities. And healthcare has that, too, quite frankly, with OPEB. The, the difference, though, is that, you know, with, we, we get regular updates from our health insurance. So we have some idea where we're going, so we can have an idea of where our rates may end up based on trends and all of that. We get none of that from Norfolk County, nothing. We just get a bill every two years. You know, every once in a while, it goes down, and we say, great. And then every couple, sometimes it goes up, and we're like, why? And, and while they, they, they respond, you know, Donna spent a lot of time with them. I can't say they always give us very clear answers. And most importantly, there's, there's no interim guidance. It's not like they say, oh, by the way, you know, our trends are, the stock market returns are not as high as we wanted. Or, oh, by the way, the actuaries now say everyone's going to live an extra ten years. Right, by the way, that happened, not so long ago, right? Every, the, the, the actuarial tables for life expectancy increased. Well, what does that mean? Well, it means you're going to be paying pension for a longer time, at least on paper, right? So they didn't share any of that with us. So how do you prepare for that stuff if, if you don't, if you don't get guidance? So I think those are two, and by the way, they're our two largest non-salary employee expenses. And again, Maya has been fabulous, even on the insurance side, by the way. You know, the smaller numbers for property casualty and that stuff. And, and I really hope that, I mean, I would love it if we could work more cooperatively. And I know we have a, I know we have a seat at the table on the advisor committee. I mean, I think anything that we can do to get Norfolk County to be more engaged with us would be great. Because it, and it's not just us, it's everyone.
They're, they're, you know, without going way too far down this path, but they're two different beasts, right? I mean, Maya is a membership organization, so they exist to make decisions that benefit the members, which are the communities and the, and the, and the employees within those communities. So their perspective is very different than in an elected kind of oversight board that hires out actuariales and a professional manager. So anyway, any questions more on the operating budget? So the FY twenty-two operating budget was recommended, and I might be looking at an old warrant by a vote of, I, do you have the vote from advisory? Sorry about that.
Um, I'm, I'm fairly certain it was unanimous, Tracy, was it eight to nothing or seven to nothing? I don't have the, oh, was it in the, was it in the warrant?
Let me take a quick look. Yeah, it is.
Sorry, I have an old printout in front of me.
So it was eight to nothing advisory.
Okay, and, and within this operating budget, Article Five is also the school budget, which was voted by school committee for five to zero.
Voted five to nothing.
And that's everything. I mean, it's, the, the budget vote is on everything, that's including the enterprise funds.
Can I make a motion?
Go ahead.
Make a motion, we recommend to town meeting floor, Article Five, the general operating budget with the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Jack Creighton abstaining for reasons I mentioned earlier.
We're having time.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Great. So we're going to move on to Article Nine, which is the capital improvements budget.
So I, I, I mean, Donna's here to talk a little bit as well. So the only thing that was left were the enterprise fund requests. And there were one for sewer. And again, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm operating a little behind because I'm, I'm, I'm away from the office. And, and I think it was four, was it four projects done for water? And so capital started the review. They recommended a couple of them, and they haven't voted on a couple of them. And the advisory meets on Thursday. So, you know, it's, it's, the enterprise fund count was a little different. I mean, yeah, and it, it's still capital, and it still gets reviewed. Their funding is different, and, and it's very integrated into the budget. So the, the only, if you would rather wait as a policy, general policy for advisory to vote first, I, I don't think they're going to finish until Thursday. I mean, I hate to have things that I want to say when it's a town meeting, but it is what it's going to be.
So two, just two quick things, sorry to cut you off, Chris, but Sam Wakeman is in the audience. And I think before we discuss Treats Pond, I'd like to go right to the town hall renovation because I know a lot of their members are here, committee members. So maybe if we could promote Sam to just give us the kind of, you know, where they're at in their capital budget voting on the enterprise funds, then we'll move to town hall, and then we can decide whether we want to, what we want to do in terms of voting. Then we'll move to town hall and then we can decide whether we want to, what we want to do in terms of voting.
I'd be happy to.
Hi, Sam, welcome.
Wait a minute, I better turn my video on.
Would love to see you.
Well, I forgot my makeup man tonight. Water, we we voted, um, to recommend the chlorine. Project and the G C and the, um, scatter. Which totals approximately, uh, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The GAC filtration for three point six million. We are, were reluctant to. Make a recommendation. Without knowing if the proposed rate increase was going to go through or not. We ended up, uh, making a vote. To recommend it contingent upon the rate increase being approved at town meeting.
Okay.
Uh, without that rate increase, we don't feel there's enough money there. To, uh, cover the GAC filtration. On sewer. We still don't have a good on what they're. The current balance in their capital stabilization fund. Um, so it makes it very difficult to look at approving what they want to do for the coming year. They have a sludge thickener of a hundred and fifty-one thousand. And it looks like they have enough in retained earnings to cover that. And they're also projecting an additional. Two hundred and seventy thousand to go into retained earnings at the end of this year. But we have not yet voted on the sludge thickener.
Great. I see Don has his hand up. So, Don, did you want to address the sludge and the retained earnings of sewer?
Yeah, I just wanted to at least mention, Sam ended up speaking on it. I did provide, um. A a projection of retained earnings based on where we're at through through, um, the third quarter. Uh, but at this point. Capital budget has not had a subsequent meeting, so I I just want to at least make make everybody aware that that information was out there. It it does look like we'll have a good end of the year. And and really, this article and this project is being funded a portion from retained earnings, a hundred and fifty-one thousand. And the remaining forty-nine are are two prior articles that we're repurposing. As it were not done or or were not needed. So, uh, of the two hundred thousand dollar ask, a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Is coming from the retainer.
And that's good, okay. So just in terms of next steps for the board. We could, we could withhold voting on the sludge thickener until capital budget. Has their meeting and we can, we can take a meet, we can take a vote, you know, before town meeting if we have the information. And then with respect to the the chlorine conversion and the scatter. We can make those recommendations based based on the recommendations that we have from capital budget. And we could also, I mean, we can put all of this off to to town meeting or we could, um. Follow and mimic the capital budget votes. And on the chlorine, I mean, on the GAC, we can also make that contingent upon the rate, um, increase being passed. So just curious how you all feel. I personally feel like to, I I want to give the people that get the warrant. Um, in their mailbox as much guidance as to those of us that have been paying attention. For the, you know, nine, ten months, um, leading into this. But it's, you know, it's up to, up to all of us. So any thoughts? How to proceed? Paul?
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to say we could, um, you know, we could either divide the article, uh, or just. Make recommendations of the four pieces. Um, I'm going to to do the four pieces and leave out. The, uh, the sludge until we're sure that capital has voted, uh, one way or another on it. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, the only question is that three point six million dollar nugget that. We wouldn't recommend if the rate increase, I I don't think I would feel comfortable as capital budget.
Yeah, as a contingent, sure, the GAC is a contingency.
You want to go ahead and make that motion then on the three?
Sure, uh, make a motion, we, uh, recommended town meeting floor article nine. With the following recommendations of chlorine conversion. Scatter as recommending to town meeting floor without contingency. And the general activated charcoal conversion filter as a contingent. Vote with the approval of the rate increase.
Okay, does that make sense to everybody? Okay, do you get that, Tracy? Sort of. Okay, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Great, okay, roll call, please.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Harry Thompson, I.
Great. Good work. Thanks, Sam.
You're welcome.
So hang on with us because, um, next up, I'm going to invite the, Paul, did you? Your hand newly raised?
So so the the fourth one, we can vote at pre-town meeting meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
The sludge thickener, right. So if you make progress on that sludge thickener for sewer, Sam, well.
I will let you know.
Like, you know where to find us.
I know where to find you, you know where to find me.
Likewise, yeah.
Sounds like something you'd order at a bar.
Yeah, Sam, we we give you the glamour stuff. Yeah, sure, thanks, Jack.
Well, they get the fancy trucks, so. That's, that's good too. Um, okay, so I am going to ask to, um. Bring into the meeting, um, members, um, or that are here from the town hall building committee. Hi, Phil, thank you, and Carolyn Coffey, Mark Cameron. They're just going, they, if you could just kind of, I I spoke with Mark earlier, just give us sort of a, a sort of a high level where we're at right now. Um, let us know the, um, I believe advisory recommended, um, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars through capital. Budget article. Uh, six to two and and then we'll talk about the capital budget. Vote, which was also, I believe, five to zero with a a caveat. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark, I believe, or Phil?
Yeah, I'll get started. Thank you for having us. Yeah, we just wanted to say where we are at right now, we're we're in the midst of a social media campaign to, uh. Deliver information that we have and ask questions and hopefully get some responses from the public so that we can refine some of this. Um, design as we go forward. We have the latest rendition with us tonight and Mark has that available. We thought we'd run that through you, it'd take about three or four minutes. And then if you had some questions from there, we could, uh, we could continue.
Thank you.
So the first is, we're we're looking to, um, the ask is for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to. Continue the design, uh, process, which includes design development and construction documents to get us through. Uh, bidding and the bidding process. Um, that also includes fifty thousand dollars roughly towards one test well for geothermal. Um, so so we can further evaluate that component and see if that's something that fits. The project needs, so. That's the ask and between now and and, um, annual town meeting, we're looking to have a. Public forum, which we're thinking of doing mid, mid-May, uh, just before, uh, we we're still before. Uh, annual town meeting as well as publishing a, uh, some frequently asked questions in the Mariner. Um, we have some Facebook pages, we have a Facebook page that we've been sharing with some of the other Cohasset, uh, pages. To to gain some interest in some, in some, uh. You know. Questions and conversations. Uh, one of the, one of the items that has already come up so far was. The the window is seen between the two connecting buildings seem to be a topic that was consistent on, uh, on the social media. Channel, so we actually took that as a, a committee and we, we have a rendering here today that that updates that. Um, something that maybe is a little bit more palatable. So if I could share that. So from this, this is, uh, this is from the Highland Ave view and and we updated. These, um, windows in the connecting portion there. They were, it was a stepped scenario before with, uh, with three series of stepped windows. This is where the main staircase is, which is why those windows were initially stepped, but. The comments seemed to be, it wasn't as, uh, maybe historic or, uh, it just didn't seem to flow with the rest of the building, so. We came up with three different options and this was the one that the, um, the committee seemed to like the best. So we proceeded with this, for the renderings. Here's a view from the corner, just showing showing the two buildings. This would be the entrance that is currently the side, so this would be the main, main entrance point for. For normal business into the main lobby of the the new addition.
And the shed remains in the back there.
The shed has not been included in any of the, uh, of the design right now. It's it's still just there.
Yeah.
It has not been included to to date with anything, uh, with any programming.
That orients us though nicely, thank you.
What's that?
It orients us to the photo, yeah.
This is the back corner. Um, we'll show the site plan in a little bit, but, uh, this is that back corner. Gives you a feel for the elevations and, um, you know, these these hand, the handicap spots would be closest. To the right side of the page here towards the church with a with a ramp going up and in to work with the elevations. The property generally slopes from, um, the common back towards the. If you're looking at the front of the building, the far right corner, um, so right behind where the shot is taken from. Here's a, here's a picture of what it used to look like once.
Wow.
Just to give an idea of what it, what it once was. And and this, this is the floor plans that we've come up with. The 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 basement is somewhat in works just as we develop all the mechanicals and understand what we need. For a mechanical standpoint in the basement. Um, I know it's hard to read any. These, uh, name designations on something so small, but again, you would, you'd be entering here on the right side of of the page here. This would be the main entrance for for normal business operations with a lobby, easy wayfinding. And, um, and then you'd also have, um. The auditorium space entrance here from from Highland Ave, where we have a series of bathrooms that. Um, would be used for both the auditorium space and to be available to the, to the common during regular and off hours. If there was, um, some events on the common. But we we, the the general idea was we tried to keep the, uh, main customer service based operations here on the first floor. Driving the programming, that that seemed to be a very big desire of the programming as well as the the structural needs of the vault. That needed to be on the first floor in the basement. But here you, we have a main stair in the, in the center connecting portion as well as a second egress stair, stair here on the right side of the page. So this was, this was an updated, was was these two stairs that they both go all the way from the basement. And service both the ba, all the basement for the first and second floors, so that there is. Um, from an occupancy load standpoint, the ability to use the basement in the future. And here is the second floor, again, some meeting, meeting rooms and, um, much of the, uh, office space above Old Town Hall. Old Town Hall is, um, structurally constraining to us, so we really had to work with the the structure that was there. And, um, that's why some offices may seem a little bit small and some may seem a little bit bigger, but the structural constraints up there with the trusses. Uh, only allows us to do so much, but we do have. The one-four-three studio over there, the toilet room and a new stair, uh, out towards the front of the building to, uh, meet current code. Here's the basic site plan, again, one entrance in off of Highland Ave, we'd be losing that, that that turnaround drive-through entrance, if you will. We 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 didn't, we did share the, uh, the desire to maintain the Dropbox, which is right over here. As you can see my cursor, but right above. Where it says lot there, um, so it would be a sign, it would be a, to be signage to direct traffic flow, but. That box would be located within the parking lot. Um, again, you have your main entrance here on on the side and then there's an emergency egress from that stair that would. Be somewhat, um, discreet if possible, if possible. Just another elevation view from the front. And that is it.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board specifically on the general design and the? What we'll be asking town meeting for in terms of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Corey?
Yeah, I don't, I don't really have any questions. I I think the the town hall building committee, they've entertained me, uh, multiple times during their meetings for. Uh, questions and they've also entertained me on, uh, one-four-three TV, so they've been very patient with me and I want to thank them for that. Um, you know, I I, you know, the the set of drawings, it's really kind of bringing the vision together. One thing that I do think that that I foresee kind of being a little bit of a. Communications challenge is the fact that this is, you know, one piece and that there will be a follow-up piece to this. And I know that, you know, capital budget was very clear that, you know, if they, with their approval, there was an implicit approval of, you know. The future funding, uh, and I just, you know, it's just important that the, the residents understand that, you know, this is one piece. And if we spend this piece, um, you know, it really should be understood that, that we, we, you know. Spend the second piece of it as well. So, uh, if you're out there and you're considering this, uh, you know. It, you know, keep that in mind that, you know, just just approving this doesn't create a building. Uh, and then it would be also a real shame if we were to spend this money and then also, uh, not get the final approval. So, um, it's a little bit of a balancing act, a little bit of communication, communication challenge, but I think it's important that. That that is clear to people, that way we don't, uh, go down a path that the town doesn't want, you know, unintentionally. Thank you.
And just, just to follow up on that, I, and I'll, I'll turn to Sam in a minute, but, you know, one of the, one of the disc, well, there's been a lot of discussions. Among people in town just in terms of financing, because that's really where the rubber hits the road, you know, how are we going to do this? How can we do this with the the least amount of impact, um, on our, on our residents? Because when it failed the last time, it actually failed in a debt exclusion. So the board at that time made a commitment to trying to find a way to fund this. Um, within our operating budget, so we weren't going out, you know, understanding that it had to fit in the scope of the capital. The capital plan because, so there is still a lot of creative discussions going on about how we're going to do that. But it's going to really require, um, the leadership in town, the select board, the capital budget advisory and. And the building committee folks to work together to find a way to do this. And and there's a lot of great ideas floating and I think we'll do that. At the same time, it also is going to require us to make a real commitment. And we can do this this summer in our goals and our budget. To really tighten, tighten our belts because we can't, um, and and we've been great. I'm not suggesting that we haven't, but it it's because we're taking on a project like this. Knowing full well that there's a lot of other bigger projects that are going to come down the way. Um, you know, financial prudence is just going to have to be, um, a- a- at, 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 at the top of our, our list all the time. And one of the questions I have, Mark, just in terms of. The bid documents and the, what happens with the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get us to the final project and the final dollar ask. Um, next year. How often does the design change or what's the expectation or is it pretty much going to look like what we're showing people today?
It's, it's pretty much what it's going to look like what we're showing today. What we don't have is a lot of the details that go behind all of these things. You know, the 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 selection of the finishes and, um, how, you know, the like, the the roofing and. And exterior wall details and and all these things, but the layout is 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 really the layout. Um, you know, they're, they're, you know, we can move a door here and, you know, something like that, but as as far as large. Ships and relaying out the floor. But as, as far as large shifts and relaying out the floor, that's, we're, we're, we're past that point. This is, this is the design that we've, we've, we've come up with, the layout, the floor plan, the look of the exterior. And sure, we can massage some things along the way, but it's not, in terms of design, it would be, you know, we'd be going backwards in some sense, but this, we've spent a lot of time programming wise as a committee working to get to where we are now.
Great. I, I wasn't suggesting any changes happen. I just wanted to make sure I knew that this is pretty much the, the building that we're going to be getting bid documents, you know, we're going to send bid documents out from. Any other select board questions or Phil, go ahead and then I'll.
Oh, I didn't have anything more. Thank you.
Okay. Um, if there's any other select board comments, we'll do that and otherwise we'll turn to Sam. Jack?
Yeah. Well done. I've followed this from the failed proposal, which almost made it. And I think you guys have done a good job. You worked hard. Couple of things, some feedback. I think the financing that Diane mentioned is very important going forward. We have to make sure that this fits within potential capital needs down the line and it doesn't starve off some other things. So I think that one of the things that's going to be needed, and this is not for you guys, is the town is going to have to show exactly where the excess cash from the operating budget is going to come to pay the bonds that are going to be necessary. And the other thing is I want to address that there is a concern. People say people are working remotely. Why do we need all this space, et cetera, and so on? Well, square footage per se is actually pretty cheap. It's the stuff you have inside and also, and I, and I think people at home should be aware that this building is designed. So it is basically somewhat what's called a clear span, which is you have a lot of flexibility within the shell down the lines if the staffing should change. But by and large, I think that you guys have done an excellent, excellent job and you're to be commended because I know how hard you've worked.
Just, just to add to expand some of Jack's points there, we, we did do a study to take square footage out of the building, basically reducing the headcount in there in, in hopes that we would be able to find space in, in other town owned buildings for, for those folks. And the savings was, was not there. It was, it was a very small savings, which didn't even include fitting out space somewhere else in town could lose folk. So it, it really, like Jack said, it's the square footage at that point, the square footage that we were able to take out was, was relatively inexpensive square footage. There wasn't stairs and, and elevators and bathrooms and things of that nature. So there were exercises based on, on the, on the various committees that we had involved with capital budget advisory. So there was some feedback there from those folks.
And I think it's important that the, I think it was important for the people's town to know that you had in fact aggressively looked at that and came to that conclusion. And it was well done. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
And just to add before I give Sam the floor, you know, I think one of the things as we talk to the community, the, the delta of what is needed in that building in terms of HVAC systems and security systems and leaky roofs and windows that don't fit, et cetera, et cetera. What we would have to do to just take care of the, you know, the, the deteriorating conditions in the building is very close to $10 million. It's, it's over $9 million just if we were just to patch everything up and fix it. So to, to, to have, you know, have, spend a little more money and get a brand new building that really meets our needs into the future with, with all the studies that have been done in terms of programming, et cetera, is really is key. And I think it's important for that message to get across. So Sam, I know there was a robust discussion and the capital budget's been very involved in helping us as a community look at financing. And if you just want to sort of summarize the, the discussion your committee had and the, 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 the vote to recommend with an asterix.
Well, we look at, at the total project, excuse me, as being somewhere between 13.5 and 14.5 million dollars when we get all through. The big question was how to finance that? If you try to finance that totally through the capital budget stabilization fund, you're going to put a debt service of somewhere in the neighborhood of probably $700,000 to $800,000 a year against, at this point, a $2 million contribution to the stabilization fund. That would leave about a million two for the remainder of the capital projects in the town. If you look at the 10-year capital plan, that projects out the capital needs of anywhere between 3 million to 6 million. Or if you include the fire and police station, $15 million yearly. And we wouldn't be able to fund a great number of those. So I think one of capital's big concerns is in terms of financing this and doing it through the capital plan of the town. We need some significant assurance that the contribution to the capital stabilization fund is going to be increased substantially to be able to cover the debt service on town hall. And that's the simplest way I can put it. Without doing that, you know, you're not going to be able to buy a police car when you think you need it, a new fire engine when you need it. Fix up something in the schools when it's needed because we just won't have enough money available. So that's it in a nutshell.
Right. Thank you. So any other comments, questions from the board? Okay. So I think we, Jack?
I just want to echo what Sam said, which is driving a lot of my concern. I think it's a great project, but I think we need to make sure that we can find the funds in the budget to add to the capital budget. And this is something, so this is not a criticism. I think it's a great job. We need this town hall. We need to move forward. But, but we have to address the capital budgets issues.
Absolutely. So there's, there's, there's two, I mean, there's two things we can do. You know, one of the things capital budget, we, we could, their, their recommendation was contingent upon, you know, a statement that we made a few years ago, that it'd be reasonable, prudent. You know, it consistent with the capital plan, which I don't think necessarily details what we need to commit to ultimately. And be financed within the current, the current levy actually. So, you know, if, if the board were comfortable with something like that, just saying we, we, we want to make assurances to both the community and to our advisory committees that we, we hear you. We're, we're not going to look for a debt exclusion. We're not, we're going to do everything we can in terms of building a financing plan, which we don't have today. But we have, are fairly confident we can get there with our creative minds and financial people to get this project so that we're not, we're not seeking any additional funds outside and we're not raiding capital budgets, a capital budgets. You know, coffers for our future projects that we have to do. I mean, we look at what we have this year in capital budget alone. It's pretty significant and we're going to have those ongoing in the future.
Would Diane, would it, would it be appropriate to say the board recognizes the need for appropriate capital planning? So that this can be built without tax increases or gutting? Help me with the language.
Yeah, I would say within, within the, with, and, and Chris, tell me if this is wrong, within the annual tax levy and without, you know, in, and consistent with or protecting other capital needs.
Okay. Who would say the board recognizes that this needs to be done, done within, needs to be done in a response, in a responsive capital manner within the annual tax levy? I'm getting lost here. Help.
This, this project needs to be financed, right? You know.
But what you, you want to say it?
Consistent, the, 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 the town hall, we, we, you know, we commit to, go ahead, Paul. You want to try?
Why don't we just say we'll do our best to fund this without using exclusionary debt?
Okay.
I mean, I mean, that's, that's the bottom line, right? We don't want to do a, a debt exclusion for this purpose. And it allows us in the future, well, we'll consider that in the future, but as of this project, we can potentially using the current finances without a debt exclusion.
And I, I think we.
How about we, we agree to handle this responsibly as first capital budget and to finance this without debt exclusion? Does that make sense?
Excluded debt. I, I just.
Without excluded debt?
I think we get, need to give a nod that we recognize the, the ongoing needs and of, of capital projects throughout town. Corey, did you have your hand up?
I sort of did, but, but we kind of went left when I thought we were going to go right. So I'm kind of left alone in the night here.
I don't know where we are. I'm on the, I've been on this merry-go-round for 15 months.
I'm a little confused by the purpose of this motion too. And if we're, if we should be doing this right this minute.
So I think there's a, a lot of concern around town about this. A lot of people who support it are concerned about this and there are a variety of, of, of people across town that we've all heard from. So we're just addressing their needs and saying we recognize it.
I, I, I personally think it's important to make a statement. Capital budget's vote was five, nothing recommending this project to town meeting with the caveat that the board did make some kind of a statement as to trying to keep it within the, the tax levy and recognizing the needs of, of other capital projects. And I, I feel comfortable saying that.
Does, I'm sorry. Does what Mr. Schubert mentioned about just basically saying, yeah, doesn't that just solve that problem? And structurally, it seems like that's exactly what we're talking about here. Is it my misunderstanding? You know, if we can do it within existing tax levy, we don't have to do a debt exclusion. So that solves that problem, but in a much more easy to understand manner, at least from my perspective.
Agreed. My only, the only thing that we're not saying in that statement that I would like to include is that we reckon, you know, that we recognize the other, the other capital needs of the community. So that we're not going to raid and we're not going to say we're not doing anything. Chris is his hand up and he's good at wordsmithing.
Let me, let me, let me try. I think, I think, I think this is, since it synthesizes things, but I, I, the select board affirms its commitment to fund this project within the annual operating levy, recognizing the need to fund other capital projects for all departments of the town.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second roll call?
Zach Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Okay. Now we need a recommendation for, to recommend to town meeting article six, article 16, the town hall renovation.
Make a motion. We recommend a town meeting floor, article 16, town hall renovation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Okay. Let the games begin. Thank you, Phil, Carolyn, Mark, your whole committee. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Right now.
You have a hand raised in the audience, Diane? I don't know.
I, I know. I, I've been in touch. That's Steve Gomer, who's chair of Affordable Housing Trust. And so he had just noticed that this was on the agenda and it really is somewhat a rubber stamp because we have, we have unanimous votes from, from the advisory committee on Affordable Housing Trust. So Steve, if you, Tracy, if you want to promote Steve, if he's still there. This is article 18. And it's basically some language changes to the original trust. Affordable Housing Trust bylaw. Steve, do you want to give it a quick general summary? We've already discussed this, which is why I didn't invite you. Or think to invite you.
I had someone notify me that it was on the agenda tonight. So I, I figured if there's, if there was any background needed, better that it come from me than, than you were collectively wondered about it.
Right.
The, the gist of it is that there was some, some word smithing necessary within the bylaw to, to have it comport with mass general laws. Some fairly specific areas, one of which is that the, the bylaw itself calls for a production plan to be presented to town meeting every year. But there's no definition of what a production plan is and there's no institutional memory of why it was created. And from our view, rather than try and, and pretend that, that we know what it is, the, the trust believes that it's simply better to remove that composition in its entirety and report to town meeting by way of the town report annually. As you are all well aware, the steering committee has created and has been, had unanimously accepted both by the select board and the Affordable Housing Trust, the housing production plan, which would suffice to replace that. The other primary element that the language addresses is the, the functional independence of the, the trust itself. In order to operate effectively, the trust needs to be able to execute fiduciary duties on an independent, in an independent manner. And as we've discussed in front of the select board in the past, this, this brings to bear the importance of the select board's power of appointment because you appoint all six independent members of the trust. The seventh being one of your, one of your own membership. That's critical because that, the ability to act independently and to execute financial agreements in order to create, preserve, excuse me, or develop affordable housing units, or if you will, subsidized housing inventory is critical to the town. Where we are relatively certain that come the publication of the census, we will fall below the 10% requirement. And frankly, we need units in town. What we found already in our own activities is that number one, developers don't want to deal with the trust if the trust isn't independent and it's not funded. All right. So we have executed both of those elements and we, we're, we're starting to get a great deal of inquiry at the moment. I note Paul Kierces here from the steering committee and can identify several projects that we're looking at past 808 Jerusalem that would be independent of inclusionary zoning requirements for, for other developers. But ultimately, without being able to act and act quickly, the trust is not an effective tool for developing affordable housing units. We've already lost out on two properties that we were excited about and, and looking at examining. But frankly, we lost out on them because we, we couldn't act quickly enough. So that's the basis for the linguistic changes. They have been reviewed and as I understand it, they have been cleaned up substantially by our special counsel to me, to me, Hesse. And I'm available for any questions if you have them.
And just to add, the advisory recommended this by a vote of seven to nothing. So again, these are just changes to the bylaw. So any questions of Steve? Okay. I've been at this for a while. Good. I'll have a motion.
Make a motion. We recommended town meeting floor. Article 18 of Affordable Housing Trust bylaw changes.
Okay. Roll call please.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Great. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you for your support, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. We only have one more recommended article. If I'm reading my agenda right and we're jumping around a little bit within the warrant is article 17, lease of property at water department. within the warrant is Article seventeen, lease of property at Water Department for solar.
Yes, so this has been voted unanimously as well, but this is just an accompanying, this is just a follow up to last year's proposals that gave the select board the approval to lease if it felt it was desirable, various town parcels and the school committee to do the same on the school side. You know, term management committee has been working feverishly to find optimal opportunities. And you've heard this reports from Tanya Bedell, and she's explained this particular article before. So this would just add the Water Department's site to this. At the moment, there is no, there is no active solicitation. The one company that was looking at it has has determined that it's not feasible for them. That said, things change. So I I did talk to Tanya Sunday again, and they remain supportive of having this authorization. Remember, all it does is grant authorization for this board and the Water Commission to say, yes, we like something. It doesn't mandate you do it. It just allows you to do it if the circumstances are correct. So it it again, it's really, it's really the same thing as last year's articles, just on the water side.
Chris, I I have a question that I I probably get in trouble for, but if if there were solar panels at the Water Department, could some of those savings be funneled to the Water Department and then kind of as a lease payment? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. If that would be the price, if it's if it's at the Water Department, if you're doing onsite, that's where we go, like with the schools, if it's on the school roofs, the most logical place for the power to go is the schools before the meeting.
So we go directly to that building. Okay.
And again, don't ask me explaining the electrical engineering because I can't. But yes, if it was on a water site, the first place it would go would be the Water Department.
No, we're running behind. We're not talking about the technicals. Paul, you have a question?
Yeah, no, I was going to mention that exactly. It it would not cross any right away. So you could directly, just as we saw with the Sewer Department, their cost of electricity is one of their big bills. This would potentially lower the cost for the Water Department Enterprise Fund, hence the town.
Great. Corey?
Does the Water Department pay their electricity bills directly or do they do they get billed through the town?
No, they pay them. Well, I mean, technically, everyone's paid through the town because they're technically they're they're independent of the town. But yeah, they they pay their own bills. They have
It's on there.
Okay, I was just, I was wondering if there's some awkwardness there because the solar panels are going towards a building, reducing the rate, even though they're town panels on a but you're telling me there's no complication. So I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, there wouldn't be town panels. They'd be actually a private developer's panels.
Correct, right, right, right. Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you.
Right, but they're thing. Okay, anybody want to make a motion to recommend this?
Make a motion to recommend a town meeting floor. Article seventeen, lease of property at Water Department for solar panel options.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Great, great work. The last article is Treats Pond. So it's the best for last.
All right, so there's been an ongoing drainage challenge at Treats Pond for a very long time. And there's been an extensive effort to find a path. Recently, the the path had been approved and funded by town meeting in 2015 was discovered not to be effective and conversations with the neighbors ensued again. And an alternative has been proposed that seems to be winning favor in that would allow for a resolution of the drainage problem with less of an impact, which is the goal, I think, of all the neighbors. It would require and and in progress now are efforts to to get the the i's dotted and t's crossed such as they may be in advance of town meeting so that a vote at on town meeting floor would be a fairly routine one. This would require some additional potential funding because it would, it's for one thing, the initial authorization was for $200,000. That was six years ago. Costs have gone up just because of that. This also would put a pipe in a different location that would require it would go further out and be underwater. So it would end up, it would find itself with more, there did, it'd be a more complicated but attainable installation process. And so I thought Brian Brian had been called, but I guess he dropped off. So the the conversations are ongoing. The language that has been presented by council, I think you've all you've all seen. I I would recommend that you record follow counsel to answer this recommendation for that particular language. And in the informational summary, in in that, it also includes, you know, funding as required. The ask will probably be $200,000. Hopefully, we'll not spend that much. That's just, it's a it's a it's a cushion just in case. We'll have better numbers in the next week or so. So if we can trim that down between now and town meeting, that would be great. So every effort's going to be made to get there. So this this alternative proposal will hopefully successfully conclude a very lengthy and collaborative conversation with the neighborhood. And again, this affects a stretch of road. It affects Atlantic Avenue itself. The reason the town is in this at all is because Atlantic Avenue is the the public interest. Atlantic Avenue floods and it can not just in big storms, but if the system doesn't work well in smaller ones, too. That's a major public safety issue because that's a very big, there are only, there are only so many roads to go back and forth in this town that connect you from one place to another, and that is one of them. The it does have private impact, too. I'm not telling you that residents don't flood, too. The public interest is the road. That's the primary driver of this conversation. So again, there'll be more information posted and coming. People will get a lot more information on the website. We'll be talking about it. And we are working cooperatively with the residents, and I hope to have more of a report for all of you in a couple of weeks of where this all is going so that we can know what town meeting looks like. Again, I'm going to stay with the engineering because that will be Brian. And I can answer questions if I can.
So I I just, I just want to summarize it. But one question first, did have we have we voted to place Article fifteen on the warrant?
Um, no, this has been a placeholder the whole way along. So
So
we've got to place it on and then with the with the language, right? Because that's
Right. And 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 the language and summary is that permitting the the select board to negotiate easements as necessary to for this drainage issue and and a sum of money to likely to be $200,000 for the construction.
I think summarizing would better say acquire.
Acquire easements.
Acquire the easements, preferably through negotiation, right?
Yeah.
Acquire the easements and fund the improvement. And the language is more legal than that, but that's
That's the summary.
So moved if it's appropriate to move forward on this.
So the motion, Jack, if if it's okay with you, the the movement would be to place this article on the warrant.
Right.
Okay, is there
We would only do that and we would not move the language as well.
Right.
Okay, I move that we place Article fifteen on the warrant.
Okay.
For Treats Pond, second.
For Treats Pond.
Okay, great. For a motion, a second, this is, and then we'll vote on the recommendation second. Okay, roll call, please.
Jack Creighton, I.
Before I vote, Chris, did you have a clarifying? I saw your hand swipe up.
I just wanted, you're voting to put the language on the war. You're not voting
Thank you. Yep.
Okay, Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Okay, so we have Article fifteen, the Treats Pond language, which is to acquire easements and fund the improvements to the tune of $200,000. Is there a motion to make that recommendation to town meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jack Creighton, I.
Just before I vote on it, the this is something that, no, for for people out there that are listening, this is a problem that's been going on for literally decades. And this outcome or this potential resolution has been hard fought, hard discussed. I want to thank the town manager, all the residents, anyone that was involved in this process. This wasn't easy. This isn't easy. And really thank you for your patience on this. This is important to the town. It's important for the safety of the town. It's important for the residents of the town, especially in the area. So Corey Evans, I.
Great, thanks, Corey. Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Great, so that's recommended. And and I, and when you said decades, we're talking 70, 80, 90 years, not
That stops today.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, so lastly, yes, Chris.
There's two more things you need to do. You need to officially, you know, vote the whole warrant. And yeah, and again, I think Tracy gave you the language. I forget if it's the publisher or whatever the, I forget the specific language. And then I just want to go over the, I want to ask before you do that. After lots of consideration, I, there's still some concerns about getting a lot of people in a room. At the same time, I realize that restrictions are being lifted left and right. That said, a lot of them left the week after town meeting. So and after looking at outdoors on the on the field, well, that's a great place for graduation. I I it has, it's a little more problematic for a town meeting. So after some consideration and lots of conversation, I would kind of recommend we go back to the Music Circus and do something similar to last year with more outside seating. I mean, obviously, there'll be more people who are vaccinated and able to sit outside and hopefully we'll have good weather. If you don't have good weather, you can just stay in your car. But we'll sell the stage, we'll sell some tents, and we'll have all the, we'll have the ability to have, you know, 300 plus people. We had 200 last year. So we we can have a good full size meeting there. And again, there's an opportunity for people that they want to bike over. They can do that. They can park it across the street over at the senior center and walk over and sit down if they want to come and go before the meeting's over. Because once you're parked, you're not, you can't leave. Unless it's an emergency, once you're, once you're parked in there, you're there for the duration. So there'll be lots of opportunities. And I'd also recommend you move the meeting up just one hour like you did last year to six o'clock. It just gives a little more light. I mean, and providing everything wraps, we might be able to finish it before, even if it's dark, there's lighting there and everything else, but it's a little more, it's a little easier to do with natural light.
Okay. Anyone have any issues? Corey?
No issues. I a hundred percent support this. I, last year, I think, was eye opening in how enjoyable a town meeting was. We still had people talking. I've got two young kids. I could be at town meeting without having to worry about a babysitter. I have the kids in the car. You know, with some snacks. It was wonderful. There was a little bit of an unofficial poll online about this, and I believe the response was 95% of respondents voted for outside. So this is, I think this is just a great way to do things, and I don't see any downsides. I know it's, it requires a little more planning, but hopefully a lot of the planning pickups we got through last year, and I'm excited about doing this again. So Mr. Senior, thank you for putting it together, and I fully support such a move.
Great, so that's there. So now I'm going to just read what we need to have a motion on, which is a vote to close the warrant for annual town meeting on May 24 at 6:00 PM at the South Shore Music Circus and authorize the posting and publication of the warrant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll do roll call in reverse order.
Carrie?
Carrie Thompson, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Jack Creighton, I.
Thank you, Jack.
I like the
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make it quick from here. And and please, if all the select board members could come to the come to Town Hall, work with Tracy and sign the warrant by this Friday because it needs to go to the printer. And there's nothing worse than a warrant that doesn't have all five signatures of select board members on it. So I ask, it's, this happened before, and I ask that you make time to do that.
Can this be put out in that little hallway area? In the front?
It's up to Tracy. I mean, maybe. What, sorry, Tracy, I didn't hear you.
I was just going to ask Paul when he thought he would
Always want to make sure I can I can get there because I'm working solid this week.
Yeah.
You know, this is one of those things that I, Paul, I mean, we can bring it to you if we have to. This this is such a fragile. So I I'd rather, I don't think it's going to happen to it if it sits outside, but you know, if we have to.
But it's that one signature sheet.
Yeah, it it's it's really important.
Understand.
Right.
Right, we don't want anybody attaching it to the end of a like legal brief or something.
Building permit.
So just because of our timing and because I didn't send something out despite Corey's hard work, I'm going to jump over the temporary use of common and we'll discuss that next week when we're going to be discussing a lot of sort of policy type things. So Chris, I'm going to turn it over to next up, which is the union contracts.
Okay, there's there's three contracts in front of you tonight. They all follow the same model that we've already had. They're one year, 2% cost of living increases. Each of them have some small language changes that are just applicable to that unit, and they really just clean up. So they've all been ratified by their membership. And they're in front of you tonight. It's the library, SEIU Library Local. It's the ASME DPW unit, and it's the ASME Facilities Unit, all three of them. I believe they're all circulated to you in advance. And I think you, I think a lot of you have actually already signed them, which makes it even better. So so once you vote, they'll be in effect. So I did July 1, by the way, they're not going to affect
I make a motion, we accept the memorandum of agreement by and between the town and Cohasset and ASME Council 93 Local 1395 Unit A Facilities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Okay, next up.
I make a motion, we ratify the memorandum of agreement by and between the town and Cohasset and ASME Council 93 Local 1395 Unit B Public Works.
Second. Roll call, please.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Okay, one more, Paul.
Make a motion, we approve the memorandum of understanding by and between the town and Cohasset and SEIU Local 888 Cohasset Library Association.
Second. Okay, roll call, please.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Okay.
I thank all of you and I
Thank you.
I want to thank the union members. I want to thank the folks who've been negotiating, Maryam Johnson, our Labor Council. And also want to thank all the unions for their cooperative attitude and getting us through this. So thank you. Next is the Norfolk County, right?
Yeah.
So I'm going to, so I I can do a short PowerPoint, or if you'd rather, I could just talk through it really quickly. Preference?
I don't have a preference.
Jack Creighton, I.
Oh. I I mean, as a short, I could go through
Did you make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah. It's not terribly late. So all right, so I will. I I this is, this is a pretty quick one. So I'll I'll, I promise I'll be, I'll be as brief as I can. Give me just a second. I'm doing this remotely tonight, so.
Maybe you should just talk us through it.
Can you see it? There we go.
Yeah.
All right.
We can see you're starting. Yeah.
Well, I can't, for some reason, I can't get the show to show, but whatever. All right, this is, by the way, shared with all the communities in in Norfolk County. And just for those of you who do not know, and we we often forget this, we are that little island off to the right. North, we're dis, we're, we, Coacit, Brooklyn are discontinuous members of Norfolk County. And the short history lesson, at least for us, is that if you see a little line that runs along the bottom, that's the old colonial line that separated the Boston Colony, the Puritan Bay, the Massachusetts Bay, Puritan Colony from the Plymouth Pilgrim Colony. So Cohasset, Hingham, and Plymouth were all part of Norfolk County. The, in the early 1800s, I believe, both Plymouth, in when Plymouth was became a formal county, the, when the state became the state as it is today, the Commonwealth is today, both Hingham and Hull moved to go into Plymouth for contiguous reasons, but Cohasset didn't. So that's, and we've just been in Norfolk County ever since. So and and you can see, it goes all the way up to Bellingham. So it's a, it's a really long county. But this is the county, this is the, this is what we're going to be talking about right now. ARP, the American Recovery Program. This is the stimulus money we've been talking about, funds being distributed on a per capita basis, and that per capita basis is $194. Why is that important? Well, it's important because in counties with abolished county governments in the state of Massachusetts, that includes Berkshire, Essex, Franklin Hampton, all of those you mentioned, all that money is going straight through to the towns. In Norfolk County, th- this money In Norfolk County, um, th- this money might stop right at the county level before it gets to the rest of us. Uh, and there's a lot of concern about this. Why? Well, oh, wait a second. Sorry. Uh, the entire county budget is actually less than thirty-five million dollars. So, a hundred and thirty-seven million dollars is more than triple, almost quadruple what they actually get. Um, the county, um, is a pretty limited pla, has a limited staff and resources. It's just not equipped to manage a hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. This is no disrespect to them. They're just not set up for that. And the bottom line is that all the communities in Norfolk County, Coacit among them, are really best equipped to determine where the money needs to be spent and should be appropriately spent, and have the fiscal oversight responsibilities and team ready to do it. We just did the, you know, the, uh, the American Reca, uh, the, the money that came for COVID protection, we've done all of this. I mean, you know, our, our, our staff is ready to go. We know what we're doing, and all the other communities in the county are in the same boat. So, and again, practically, you know, the, the, the A R P funds, among other things, go to su- support lost local revenue. Well, that's meals, hotel tax, motor vehicle taxes. We get those. The county doesn't get that money. That's a local, that's local money. Um, cultural activities and social activities. Well, we do all of those kinds of programs at the local level. The county doesn't do those things. Uh, and also the other frontline services. I mean, apart from the ag, the ag school, which again, has its own funding source, because education is funded in, in a different pot, pot of money. Um, regular, you know, kindergarten education and public safety and health and all of those things, they're done at the city and town level. They're not done at the county level. And if you look at, this is just a snapshot that came out of the PowerPoints and shown to others. You can see that Cohasset, we're gonna get the first eight forty-three that's coming over, you know, this cycle and next year, fiscal year. But there's another almost one point seven million dollars that we're not gonna see if the county stops it. It goes to the county first. And that's a lot of money. You can see in some other communities, and this is just a small snapshot, there's a lot of other money. And Braintree and Quincy, it's, it's really, really big money. So, um, the record, sorry. Let's try that one more time. Very sensitive touch here on this.
Somebody spelled recommendations wrong.
Uh, yeah, look at that. Uh, bad spelling. Uh, that was not me, actually.
I know. I think I know who it was, though, but.
Didn't catch that. Um, the recommendations, um, that have been shared by the towns and cities, um, is that the commissioner should transfer all the funds directly to the counties using the same per capita formula that every other county's handling for. If the county does say, hey, you know, we have some very specific things that we need money for, you know, uh, HVAC and the, 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 the courthouse or something like that, there's a pot, there's a way for us to send money, again, equally, you know, a per capita back to them in small amounts, if they have legitimate projects. Um, and that all the select board and city councils are being asked to consider adopting a resolution uh, or a letter, or both, uh, to the county commissioner saying, hey, please don't do this. Um, you really need to just pass this money through. So that's, that's the, uh, quick and dirty version. There's actually a much longer version that I didn't go through. Um, now, I'm not asking you to do a resolution or not recommending you do resolutions tonight. I actually have a language to circulate. I know if, and I don't know if, uh, I, I, Tracy had a chance to send that out, because I gave it to her only later this afternoon. So I'll have her circulate that language on the resolution. We're still, there's still a lot of work with the county. I've been on a call with the Assistant County Administrator and some of my colleagues. Um, and I know that the county commissioners are still looking at this. If you remember last year, Plymouth County kind of jumped in the middle and took the money and distributed to their towns during the, the, the early phases, and it became very complicated. And when the auditing is done, I, I don't think I want to, and it, and they spent a lot of money hiring consultants to do it. I mean, we already have all that stuff in place. The county of Norfolk would have to do the same exact thing. They'd have to spend money to give it away, which doesn't make any sense. Um, again, the, 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 uh, this resolution, I will circulate, and I just ask you to think about it. And the next time we all come together, um, if things have not moved, uh, it might not be a bad idea for the board to adopt a resolution and our letter, asking the county commissioners just to pass through this money like every other county is doing. And, um, Barnstable being a total exception, but they operate entirely differently on the gate, um, and let the money flow through a local level.
Um, Corey has a question then, Paul.
Uh, Chris, have you heard from the county at all on, on, they, you said that they'd have to spend it to use it. I understand what you meant there, but are there any specific projects that they have in their queue to say, this is gonna free this up? Have they given you reasons for what they're doing outside of just because they want to?
Well, I mean, I, I, yeah, I, I think, I think the, uh, there's two new commissioners, I think, uh, uh, on the board. So, so it's, it's only three commissioners to begin with, right? So, uh, and I think, uh, one of them is very new to this whole thing. Um, and they're, they're really have, they're having a, a spirited conversation about their role as a, as a county, right? What, what is their relevancy to all of us, uh, at the local level? And that's great. They can have that conversation. Um, that said, that I don't know if they should have it around a hundred and thirty-seven million dollars of recovery.
And, and, yeah, maybe not in the middle of a pandemic. Yeah, I'm with them on that, but this may be not the appropriate time.
Um, and again, I, I, you know, I've talked to the county on and off for the last eight years. We've talked about a lot of partnerships and uh, things, and I've been to the county, I mean, I've actually been there and, and met with the folks over in Dedham, and, um, uh, and they're, you know, friendly. Uh, I, I just, there haven't been a lot of relevancy. I mean, you know, unfortunately, uh, you know, a county government in Massachusetts never really existed in a very strong way anyway. Uh, I'm not entirely sure why Norfolk continues anyway. I mean, you know, Middlesex, when I was a reporter a long time ago, I covered the end of Middlesex County, and it was a nightmare. And some of the stories I, I wrote about missing seals, and they couldn't balance the books. It was, it was bad. Um, and that, and Norfolk, the, again, there's nothing like that going on in Norfolk. That said, the state's taken over the jails, they've taken over the courts in these other counties. I mean, why it still hangs on Norfolk County, I, I don't know. I know there's a golf course, and I know there's an ag tech school. They don't have to go away. They can still be public. Um, I, I don't know if the county has to exist to, to maintain them, but that's not something for today or for me. Um, so, and we're still in conversation, so.
One thing to note, too, is that at least one of the commissioners of the three is, is, is a select board member in a town. So, I, I do think cooler heads will prevail, because he's probably getting pressure, um, within his own community to, to make the right decision. And it's a per capita, you know, po- pool of money. So, it seems to make sense to distribute it to the per capita's. Um, Paul?
Yeah, just to, uh, the, to mirror on what Chris said, you know, thirty or thirty-five years ago, the, the structure of the county government and the county administration, uh, basically started to dissolve pretty much west of Worcester almost entirely. And a lot of the, like Chris was saying, the, uh, the, the, um, you know, the, some of the schools, some of the, um, prisons, all of that went back to the state. And this is an example why it did, because when situation like this arise, it, it really is at the local level, we can get a lot more functional use of the money. And I totally agree with this. I mean, you know, the, there are limited, uh, counties left like Norfolk that has some relative organizational structure remaining, but, you know, the majority of the other counties, it's more of a geographic pattern and, and voting pattern than it is a government. So, I, I'm, I agree with this, yeah.
You know, there are, there are parts of the country where the county is the foundational unit of government, like Virginia, a lot of, a lot of communities in the south and the west.
Texas, yeah.
New York, where I was before, was far too complicated to talk about, but every level of government had some relevancy. It got very complicated. But I do know that where I, uh, used to work was, it, it got very complex, um, depending on who was trying to take what. Um, so, again, this is really just simplicity, right? Flow the money through, uh, if there's some projects that have relevancy to all of us, uh, in the county that need some work, there's a way, uh, apparently to send money back to the county and, you know, small amounts that would help them fund some kind of important, you know, HVAC system or for an important building. Um, but they don't, they don't do sewer, they don't do water, they don't do broadband, they don't do any mass countywide stuff anymore, so.
Well, and, um, that, for our future discussion, um, and when we can move on, it, it is, you know, when we get the money, whether it's eight hundred or, or, you know, two point five, or, um, you know, we are gonna have to have a, a discussion about how those funds are gonna be expended. Um, obviously, you know, one, it's one-time money, so it should be one-time costs and, but what, we're gonna need to stay on top of that, especially as we start to build out um, what we can use it for and some of the needs that we have, including town hall, as we talked about earlier, you know, could that fill the void somewhere else in terms of um, capital needs? So, anyway, stay tuned, keep us posted on that. And if, if there's a letter to be signed or something, um, bring it to the board, um, and share the resolution. Um, I'm gonna move us on to town manager update. Anything else, Chris?
Just a couple of quick things. Uh, the last day to register to vote for the annual town meeting and the annual town election is Tuesday, May fourth, a week from tonight, eight o'clock. Clerk's office will be open until eight o'clock. You don't even have to come to Clerk's office. You can do it online, but it has to be done by next Tuesday, May fourth. Um, fourth quarter taxes are due May third, so the day before, next Monday. If you have not paid your taxes, please do it. Uh, you can do it online. Uh, there's a whole easy-to-use web portal for that. You could do it in person, you could put it in the box, but it must be physically received by the town by close of business on May third. That's the way it works. And I forget the treasurer collector's rule about the box. You can't just drop in at, you know, four twenty-nine. Um, so I, uh, so please, uh, and postmarks are, are not sufficient as well. So, uh, but this is just a reminder. Um, May third is the, uh, the deadline for the next quarter of property taxes. Uh, and by the way, I apologize. I've been, I was remiss, uh, and I, I remember this after the fact. Um, in the CAFER, uh, and this, this was, uh, I think might help, uh, with Selk, Selkman's Cre- Creighton's earlier question. There's a chart on page one twenty, and I, I had forgotten that it was there until I thought about it again, that has, uh, employment statistics for the last ten years, and it's been in every year. Um, I, FY twenty, I don't, it's not always on page one twenty, but it's right around there. Um, what's a little uh, a little squishy in there is the, how we count special police officers and rec employees. Um, that said, it, it's data, and it's ten years worth of full-time equivalent employment data. So, it's there. Um, uh, again, and it's on the website. Uh, and if you don't have a hard copy of the book, it's on the website. It's right about page one twenty. So, if that's helpful, Jack, I, um, let me know.
Oh, thank you. And I think we should continue this discussion. Um, you know, when I ask questions, it's generally because I have an interest. One of the interests has to do with this, because I've been following the, um, town hall and the funding and the capital budget. So, understanding how money is spent in the rest of town government is probably becoming increasingly important, because we have a lot of capital projects that are waiting after the, um, town hall. I know some parents are concerned about some of the issues with the schools. And I think we're gonna, we have the ability to solve these issues. But I think we need to be very careful in how we spend our money. So it's just the beginning of a process. Thank you, Chris.
Great. Corey? Yeah, do you hand up?
Uh, did you fix my name? Chris?
Yes.
Spelling my name.
I, I'm, I'm, uh, we're gonna put people in stocks myself first.
C O R E Y, and then wherever Carrie is, K E R I.
Yes.
Two different people.
I can't remember whether I, I, I have lots of red lines.
Uh, please, but if you have any edits, uh, you know, again, the data, the, the, the numbers are good. Uh, apologize for, you know, some of those spelling things, um, uh, but we've gone through another one. So thank, you know, by the way, this
We're reading.
I was gonna say, this is just a test to see if you're, I, that's what I always joke with staff. If they give me something like that, I'm like, you were just testing me to see if I was paying attention. So I'd like to say I was just testing to see if you were paying attention, but apologies for any, there was no, 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 uh, no, no, no bad intent. Uh, sorry. We'll lock those in, so they, they always show up in the, in the word search. Uh, and if there's any, but if there's any questions about any of the stuff in the, in the document, or there's any up, updates, please send them, because we're in the, we want to get this up, uh, on the website uh, for next week, so residents can look at it.
Great. By Friday. Just remember to sign the, um, anyway, uh, select my comment period. Jack?
Yeah, yeah, hi. I, I just want to update people. I had a wonderful meeting this morning with the lobstermen and, uh, Police, uh, Chief Quigley and Lieutenant, uh, Lopes. You know, down on the town pier, the lobstermen are trying to make a living. People go down, they park there, they don't know they're parking in an area which is a loading zone for the lobstermen. There's not a lot of signage, and there's been some, uh, the, the dissatisfaction. If you know the lobstermen, they're vocal. So, anyway, we had a great, uh, um, you know, we had a great meeting. Police listened, lobstermen listened. So what we're going to see going forward is it will be clearly mu, you know, designated with signs and stripes exactly what part of the town pier, because the town pier is a working pier. So it's very clear that this isn't for us to park to take pictures or whatever. It's a loading, and there'll be parking for the lobsterman's trucks, spots for the loading and the working. So the working part of the dock will be clearly designated. Uh, and the other thing that was interesting is people have been concerned about whether or not there is a police boat, and the police do have a donated boat from the environmental police, which is kept on a trailer at the police station. And they will use it on busy weekends to go out onto the spit. But they are not regularly patrolling the harbor. They don't intend to regularly patrol the harbor, but they are available on high traffic Memorial Day weekend, a busy summer weekend. So, when you see that out there, this isn't a big you know, major, uh, budget of the police department, but the police is there on those types of issues. So all in all, it was a very good meeting, and I wanted to take this opportunity to let everybody in town know um, that there is some progress. And when you go down there, respect where the lobstermen need to work, and they'll respect where, where everybody else needs to park. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Um, Corey?
Uh, not that there's anyone watching anymore, but, uh, May first is the, uh, beginning of the town-wide twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. There are signs around town. Uh, I understand that this is, I would say, a hard, uh, change for, for some residents. There've been a couple cases just in town, but also recently outside of town, especially the two young, um, men that died in Pembroke. You know, one life is too many. I, you know, and, and, you know, for me, driving slower, especially around town, especially on some of the windy streets that we have in town, especially downtown. Uh, it's just, it's worth the sacrifice to go a little bit slower. So, uh, you know, the police are out. Uh, they did a little bit of a safety, uh, month of April for, for texting and driving. And, you know, just keep in mind, you know, the police and the, the select board, we're not trying to get people in trouble. We're just trying to keep people safe. Uh, and that's the only goal here. Uh, and if you can just slow down a little bit, take a little bit more time, there may be someone that's not, that's around a corner you don't see, or, you know, whatever the case is, another oncoming car. Uh, and just keep that in mind when you're going around town, and try to keep yourself safe and the rest of your, your neighbors safe, too. Thank you.
Paul?
So, a couple of quick things. Um, as Oscar Wilde said, Corey Happy is the man whose name is only misspelled twice, so, um, it will occur. Uh, the other thing that's out there, there's a, um, a, a state, uh, is working on a, um, municipal building committee and municipal building funding, uh, much like they have with the school building, uh, funding at the House and Senate level. They're looking at it now because there's never been a, a, a means for towns to basically look for funding through the state to help them with large municipal projects such as buildings, um, town halls, um, public, um, you know, public safety buildings, things like that. So this is in the works now. Um, which, which very well may, um, may help us. Um, so I, um, seeking it with Dr., with, um, uh, Joe Moschino and our, our State Senator, Pat, uh, O'Connor, to see, um, what the, the chance of that getting passed. I think it's probably pretty good because there's evidence that the school building co- committee works well for that. And lots of other states have this as a, a mechanism for towns that really can't afford a large infrastructure project, but they need it. And it's been a hundred years since the last town building, for example. Uh, the other, uh, bit of good news, Cohasset has the highest level of vaccination for their, um, residents in the state. So, uh,
Yay, Cohasset!
So, we're, we're number one for that. Um, a- and again, you know, there, there's still cases out there. It's gotten much better. Um, the, the things I worry about would be large groups of people that are unvaccinated. And just look at the Rose Garden event, that's, um, a worrisome, even though it was outdoors. Uh, the nice thing is that the number of people in Massachusetts that are vaccinated, um, is second only to New Hampshire in percentage. So, we're gonna be in a pretty good, uh, you know, bubble by the, I think by the, uh, the middle of the, the summer. So, uh, all good news. That's it.
Thanks, Paul. Carrie?
That's a great statistic. Thanks, Paul. Special shout out to everyone who showed up on Saturday to help clean up the town. It was amazing turnout for Earth Day. We had beautiful weather, and it was really great to see people getting all those bags of trash collected from all over town. And another special shout out to the Alternative Energy Committee and Town Hall and Chris and everyone who helped with the new charging stations on Sunday. That was also really fun to watch, and it, it was a good weekend for town.
Y'all stole my thunder. Um, I
And then you muted yourself.
I just play around with my mouse pad. Um, one quick question on the signs, the speed limit signs and the go slow. I have I haven't noticed new signs up, but maybe I just haven't noticed.
Isn't it go slowly?
Whatever.
There's temporary signs up.
Yeah.
Oh, there are. Okay.
It's an adverb.
The big new ones are on order. Um they have to, they have to meet state standards.
Yes.
Um.
Okay, I I'm just asking only because I know that we had um somebody in town visit us to ask for those specific go children's low signs or whatever in the village and um I just wanted to give her an update. So. Um I have nothing else other than um what Carrie said. It was, it was a big weekend uh for for getting outside in the earth and and the positivity rates or, you know, the vaccine rates are really exciting and. I I, we all see hope. Um so we'll. Let's just uh keep it going.
Dan, can I just add on to the police thing? As you know, I was the only one who voted against the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. And the chief assured me that the police are looking for me and they intend to issue me a ticket for doing twenty-six in a twenty-five mile an hour zone. And he assured me that that they will get a bounty. And they will give me multiple tickets.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I still have a couple more things. I mean, it, it, and I will say that since we made that vote, I I have been very intentionally driving twenty-five, even in other communities when I'm on side roads and it is, uh I, it's actually very pleasurable. So it can be done. Um we have two sets of minutes. Um. I disappeared. Um there we go. Two sets of minutes, uh March thirtieth and um April thirteenth. If anybody would like to move them.
Make a motion that's like what approved the uh minutes for March thirtieth and uh April fifteenth, April thirteenth.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Uh Jack Creighton and as clerk, um the, I believe that these should be probably taken electronically and until such time as we're able to do that, um I abstain from this phone.
Cory?
Uh Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Ah, come on, Cory, you could have done it.
I knew you wanted. Second.
Roll call.
Jack Creighton, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
We're adjourned. Thank you all very much. We all.
Good night all.
Good night all. We've had fun.